Good idea to me. You guys are all smart people. You're all very smart people. I just couldn't understand why you had to have other people decide for you how your money was going to be spent when that's what we pay you for. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. We were getting information. We were reviewing it on a monthly basis, but the information was awful. And it's now been straight. Okay. Anyone else?
Jim Corrigan, county commissioners, this is not necessarily for you. You already know, this is for all citizens in Harris County. About the beginning of the meeting, before y'all got here, there were some folks here and I mentioned to them about the YouTube page, the YouTube site. And what I wanted to bring up, all of Harris County citizens here, so if you know what your county commissioners are doing for you, you can go to the YouTube site under Harris County, Georgia Concerned Citizens and see all the meetings unedited every two weeks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, now we'll close the public hearing. No more comments, commissioners, please. If there's any comments you'd like, it's just closed with a public hearing. The action vote will come later on in the meeting. All right, being none, then we will move forward. Uh, thank you with any other citizens other than...
Yes, sir.
And all of those who signed up, at least you had the opportunity, you either spoke or chose not to, so. Your business. All right, new business, a resolution, recognition. It has been proposed that the Harris County Board of Commissioners pass or adopt a resolution of recognition for Neil Joseph Callahan Jr. and Patrick Michael Paccar. These are two young men, citizens of the county who live in the Piedmont Lake community. And when the elderly gentleman went missing some, not too long ago, these two young men were out fishing and they noticed the roof of a car submerged in Piedmont Lake, reported that to the authorities, waited for the authorities to arrive there, showed them where it was, and it turned out that it wasn't the vehicle of this missing individual and he had driven his car out to the lake and it was deceased. But, uh, so we have prepared a resolution, and I would like to read that resolution and then take a vote on it. It's a resolution of recognition to Neil Joseph Callahan Jr. and Patrick Michael Paccar. Whereas on Thursday, June 1, 2017, Herbert Davis Sonny Gruber, a longtime resident of Harris County, was reported missing from his home in the Piedmont community. And the sheriff's office initiated a search for Mr. Gruber to include a lookout for the vehicle he was last seen operate. And whereas on Friday, June 2, Neil Joseph Callahan Jr., age 14, and Patrick Michael Paccar, age 12, were fishing in Piedmont Lake and observed what appeared to be the top of the vehicle submerged in the lake. And whereas the two young men immediately called 911 to report what they'd seen, waited for law enforcement to arrive, and using their boat transported law enforcement to the area of the submerged vehicle. And whereas as a result of the actions of these two young men, Mr. Gruber's body was subsequently recovered from the submerged vehicle, thus avoiding what could have been a long delay in the resolution of the search for Mr. Gruber. Now therefore, the Harris County Board of Commissioners wish to recognize Neil Joseph Callahan Jr. and Patrick Michael Paccar for their contribution in the search and recovery of Herbert Davis Sonny Gruber, and resolve that this resolution of recognition be spread upon the minutes of the Board of Commissioners of Harris County so resolved this 15th day of August 2017. I will entertain a motion regarding this resolution.
I would like to make a motion that we adopt the resolution.
Does anyone have a second?
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? All in favor of this, if I raise my hand, motion carries. I think it's a wonderful tribute to the youth in, uh, the youth in this county that they realize that something has gone wrong and that they need to, uh, need to report this and bring it to the attention of authorities, which I know gave a great deal of comfort to, to the, uh, the family of Mr. Gruber. Will these gentlemen hear?
Yes.
And? We will, uh, with this passage, uh, let's, uh, commissioners, you want to take the photo I've drawn with these two? Yeah. And soon as the other did its pass, we will prepare the final resolution and get it through. Thank you. Get right here, y'all, be in front of us. So y'all, there, okay, where you two. Commissioner? He's not over, is he? Okay. All right, we'll, uh, start debating again. Nothing will top that, I tell you. Uh, next item on the agenda, uh, is, uh, TUSA, who is a consultant for, we've been using to try and rescue the 911 system, which takes technical involvement in a lot of issues that we do not have the expertise in, and no one here does. Uh, but they, they have, uh, their agreement was in phases, and we had to approve each phase as we moved forward. Uh, they have submitted a proposal for, uh, the, uh, no, I'm sorry, yeah, this is the develop, I'm sorry, I got a hit of myself. Uh, this item is for, it's also TUSA, uh, but we have been meetings with them trying to, to work through and understand what our issues are. There's several parties involved, Diverse Power, Harris County, Dean Ginn's two-way, as well as our 911 and sheriff's department. We have, have decided that we, certainly there needs to be an understanding of whose responsibility is what, uh, and, and, you know, who's going to pay for this and who's going to pay for that. Uh, so we have determined that the parties involved should get together and decide upon a course of action, uh, and then that would culminate in a contract between those parties that Mr. Taylor would draw up the contract as our county attorney, uh, but that the parties would discuss and come to an agreement as to all of the particulars on that. TUSA has prepared a recommendation to us that they would handle that for us and get it to the point of turning it over to Mr. Taylor with everything worked out. Uh, and their estimated cost for handling that, which is not in the budget, uh, and is estimated to cost about $15,000. Uh, Mr. Dowling, if there are comments that you would like to make on this, or Mr. Taylor, even one of you.
Well, Mr. Chairman, board commissioners, again, this is a, this, the 911 system is a, is a huge, huge animal. Uh, it deals with a telephone system, a CAT system, and this in particular is the tetra radio system. Right now, there's no agreement between the county and the owner of the system, Diverse Power, on how to use their system for our 911 purposes. So basically, in, uh, at the next meeting, September 5th, TUSA will be giving the board the evaluation, their evaluation of the tetra radio system. And I believe they're going to be recommending a pretty significant improvements to a system that Diverse Power owns. And we would like to have agreements between the parties establishing each other's responsibilities on this system. And so to craft up an agreement, TUSA would provide the technical aspects of a 911 system and configuration and how to keep it, keep it maintained, and then the, our county attorney would then prepare the legal aspects of this agreement. And it would be a long-term agreement. So, state recommends approval of this contract.
If I have some comments?
Yes, ma'am.
I apologize first, but I've always only have one working vocal cord, so if you can't hear me, raise your hand. Um, number one, this is an unbudgeted item. Where's the money coming from?
Here, well, this fund would, it would come from, right now, it could come from general fund reserves. That's where I got it coming from, if approved. Or it could come from salt waste fund reserves or water fund reserve. But I'm recommending general fund reserves.
Okay. I had made the statement before that I think we have spent far too much already in reserves. I think this is the kind of spending that got us to the point where we are today in this county. And my personal opinion is, Diverse Power has legal counsel on shore. The vendor will have legal counsel on shore. And we certainly have capable legal counsel for the county. And if the three of those can't draft a contract, we're in trouble.
All right, taking the question. Any other comments on this?
I have to agree. Um, of course, the vendors, the counsel is going to be paid for by us if we have the stump, of course. Um, and our attorney will be paid for by us. So, and I say us, meaning Harris County. So it's a matter of Diverse Power's attorney's involvement, I would imagine, there. And we don't know if they have, they've been involved in drafting this type of agreement for Diverse Power.
I don't believe so. Because now, but don't forget, we have a wealth of legal expertise, but we have no technical expertise. This TUSA contract would provide the needed technical expertise.
It would provide that this $15,000 is for the legal expertise to draw the document?
No.
And I'm misunderstanding.
Yes, yes. This $15,000 is for TUSA to provide that, their technical expertise only.
To do?
To, to help draft up a legal contract between the parties from a technical perspective.
Let me clarify. The $15,000 is only a minimal for 100 hours' work. And if it goes over 100 hours, there'll be more cost incurred.
Why did they not foresee this previously when they presented all this to us?
Okay. This is a huge project. It is still unfolding. I don't think when, when TUSA came here in January, neither did I. I didn't know the county did not own its own 911 radio system, nor did I, nor did I know, nor did TUSA know, we don't not only own the system, we have no rights to the system. The county's 911 system, we're a guest on a utility company's, um, radio system. We have no rights to it. In theory, they could give us off tonight, and they wanted to, but I know they're not. So this is a legal arrangement between the county and the owner of the system, and the 911 system is one of the, one of the, uh, basic services a county can provide, and we don't own it nor do we control it. This document will help us control our usage of a utility company's system and convert it from a, from a utility communication system to a public 911 system.
I don't think that any, I don't, I know that I don't. I know we need contracts. My question is, why do we have to pay the consultant? An additional $15,000, maybe more, that has not been budgeted when we, when I'm sure that we have very perfectly capable people that can draw contracts?
I can draw a contract. I can draw it round, I can draw it flat. However you want to draw it, I can draw it. The $64 question is, and particularly one of this nature, is what goes into the contract? What is a tetra UVF radio system? I know what, I know what an AM FM radio is, but how does this work in regards to Diverse Power and, and, uh, how do those things mesh up to deliver the service to this county to have 911, uh, 911 system? So when you get somebody out on Forts and Road that picks up a telephone and says, "I need a, I need an ambulance," then you can have that ambulance scrambled out there, or you need a deputy out there, uh, or, or a volunteer fire department out there. That's what I understand this is going to, is going to do, is provide that technical portion of what goes into the contract. And once I, once we get that, I can put it in the contract, or I can try it without the, without that. But, you know, I, I, I think the better thing is probably is to look at the, utilize somebody that's got the, the technical expertise in, in these radio systems and how they should be developed and, 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 uh, and what the responsibilities of each party should be and that, that type of thing.
And we'll make one more comment. This is probably not going to be received very well, but I'm going to make it anyway. Elected officials are elected to protect the people, the citizens, from bureaucrat. That's all it goes at.
Will there likely be any charges from Diverse Powers for their input in negotiations with the contract?
Probably not. I'll talk to the president of Diverse Power. He's willing and able to, um, to meet with us. Uh, we are a guest for one of the most basic systems a county can provide, and he is willing and able to provide assistance, and he's willing for us to call him.
This contract is for a block of 100 hours. If it doesn't take 100 hours, we're not paying $15,000 off of it.
That's right.
So, just as any legal service or consulting service, we'll pay them for the number of hours that they actually work for us on this.
And if it's less, then they'll charge us less.
That's the first time I've heard that.
Why?
It says right here, a block of 100 hours.
But I was also telling that was a minimal.
Depends on how negotiations go. Because this will be a highly, highly complex document of, of a 911 system. And basically, the reservoir director and I are just trying to make an unworking system we currently have, we're just trying to make it work.
How much of this impacts with what Diverse Power has to say, you know, yes or no, continue using it X number of years, whatever? Um, do, is, is all that technical information necessary? I know, I know it is for our end, and it's, it's way above and beyond any expertise we could ever dream of having ourselves, but in what the diverse powers role is, I'm just wondering, is that, all that technical information, is it really needed for the contract with them because isn't the contract for them just usage? Or is it, um, again, if this is coming from?
Beyond me, I don't know.
I mean, that's, that's what I'm kind of interpreting this as being, is it's, we're, we're going to be using diverse powers, uh, equipment, et cetera, whatever it is, but the really technical stuff is ours and, and wouldn't be involved in the con, and I was just wondering how it's involved in the contract with diverse powers.
How do you mesh, how do you mesh it together? I think that's what the contract would be, is how do you take, or we have whatever they have and make it, and make them work, and the duration of it and who's responsible for what, you know, that type of thing.
I kind of share the same, same concern that Commissioner Langston voiced, uh, but if I'm correct, I know, counselor, I know you can draft an agreement, however you told the draft, but this is a technical item. Uh, and I don't know that we have anyone in the county who is not a part of this, that has that expertise, and I guess, am I correct in saying that, that really what, what this contract to TUSA is not to draw the contract, but to protect our interest in determining, and they have an understanding of the technical issues. And so they would, in essence, if the county's paying them, they would be our advocate in making sure that the agreement says what we're willing to do, as, as, and we don't create any rabbit holes that, uh, come back and bite us at some point.
That's exactly right. Also, uh, you know, the reservoir director, you know, Monty, can you craft up a contract to this magnitude?
No.
Okay.
I can operate the equipment. We can send help if you need it, as far as how it works, what it works, and the legal aspects. I can.
And are we having issues with Diverse Power and, and usage and outages?
We have some outages.
And we have no control of that?
No.
Okay, this agreement would, would help us get control of those things and help us negotiate. For example, um, one of the ideas you're going to have to see on the September 5th meeting with the evaluation of a tetra system, what not ours, Diverse Power's tetra system that we're using, you're going to see, um, a lot of, they're going to recommend a lot of improvements. Well, I share one improvement that is needed for the 911 system, but Diverse Powers is willing, is not willing to implement that. Well, there's need to be some negotiations. Is there any other way? I don't know, I don't know any other way. Monty doesn't, and the, these technical folks know, and they can help us negotiate to protect our interest, and that right now, we have, we have none.
Would there be any problem in setting this up as just on an hourly basis instead of just block?
Yes.
Because that can be quite misleading.
We can, we can cap it at $15,000 by an hourly rate.
I think it's, well, if we cap it, we'll just come back, they'll just ask us to come back and more, but I think maybe that's good to, to be.
The power will have that control.
It's not probably said between everybody else, but also, that might be good.
But I can convert that to an hourly rate.
Might be good to put a cap on it, stop that.
I think we need cap on it.
I would do that.
The way I'm thinking about this is that we are about and have spent a lot of money to make sure that we have a state-of-the-art 911 system.
That will last for many years.
That will last, that's right. And that our citizens will be well protected by that. And yet, even with all of that money that we're going to spend, we are still dependent on Diverse Power. And so we better have a doggone good contract between Diverse Power and this county, which we do not even have a bad contract now, we don't even have a contract. We better have a good contract to protect the investment that we are making on this new 911 system. And if we don't, shackle us. And if we're going to let $15,000, and that is a lot of money, it's a lot of money to be, it's a lot of money to all of your city out there, it's a lot of money to everybody sitting up here. But we can't let $15,000 keep us from having a contract that protects our investment into 911 and the safety of every citizen in Harris County. And so that's where I'm, when I look at that, that is a lot of money. But these are the people who know how to negotiate that, to protect our interests, and to communicate that to Mr. Taylor so that he can protect us. So I'm in favor of this. I do think we need a cap on it, and I think we need a monthly or bi-weekly report of their spending so that we can kind of monitor how the negotiations are going. And so that's, that's how I feel about it.
All right. Any other comments, questions? All right, now we entertain a motion.
I make the motion to approve the $15,000 cap on the services of TUSA to assist the legal counsel in developing the contract.
And to report?
And to report to us, I don't know how regular, because I don't know the.
It's like periodically.
Periodically, the progress.
And also.
And the amount of hours and money that we're spending.
And also.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Any comments? All in favor of the motion, please see if I raise your hand. Close.
Thank you.
Okay, motion carries. All right, now the next one is also by TUSA for the 911 system, Phase 4, which in the contract was unpriced and left to be determined, uh, consulting services. And they, uh, they have now submitted a proposal for the cost of Phase 4, an estimated cost of $54,000. It was not something that we had proved before. Again, this one is not in the budget. And I guess I would entertain a motion at this point in time.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to table this until we hear from TUSA in the presentation.
Until next meeting.
At the next meeting. They, um, said that they would provide a pricing estimate. I have no idea what the $54,000 is for. Um, they also said that they will, once the vendor is selected, that they will provide us a detail.
Okay.
And I would like to see the detailed items, you know, $54,000, which is also on the budget.
Understood, and the motion is tabled until at least the next meeting and perhaps longer if they don't have the detailed vendor on it. All right. Okay, then the next item on the agenda is resetting the mileage rate. Um, we've had three public hearings, it's required, uh, a lot of heartfelt comments from, from citizens. We also discovered some other issues, uh, that maybe need addressing as we went through that, some roadway issues that need working on, mounds, and a few other things, which is good that we were able to hear those kind of things and address them. But, uh, it's now come, come time for us to determine what to do with our mileage rate for, for the next year. Current mileage rate is at 6.19. Uh, school mileage rate, maintenance operations mileage is 17.91, plus the school has a .65 bond indebtedness, and so the total mileage rate, um, for the county, uh, would be 27.2 for the unincorporated part of the county. And the details for the city of Westport. We went through five budget meetings, trying to repair as much from the budget as we could. And, and I think we, we had. some roadway issues that need working on, and mounds, and a few other things, which is good that we were able to hear those kind of things and address them. But it's now come, come time for us to determine what to do with our millage rate for, for the next year. Current millage rate is at six point one nine. School millage rate, maintenance operations millage is seventeen point nine one, plus the school has a point six five bond indebtedness. So the total millage rate for the county would be twenty-seven point two for the unincorporated part of the county. And the details for City of West Point. We went through five budget meetings trying to repair as much from the budget as we could. And I think we, we had five budget meetings and three public hearings on the millage rate. It's now time to make a motion as to what that millage rate would be. Certainly entertaining motion at this point in time, and certainly hear from any commissioner.
I'd like to address that. I appreciate all of the people who've come to talk to us and who, many came thinking that it was already a done deal. Many didn't come thinking that it was already a done deal. And if any of those who came, or anybody in the county, they were sitting in our seats, I think that there are some things that are funded in this budget that they would agree are things that we cannot neglect. We haven't had an increase in deputies in twelve years, but the growth in this county, none of us are getting any sweeter. And so when Sheriff comes and says, I need four new deputies, that's very difficult. When he hasn't asked in twelve years, that's very difficult to say, no, we can't afford that.
Actually, he has asked a couple of times, we've turned him down.
And said, no, I'm glad to know we're hitting this issue. The nine one one system, that is a basic service that we need to provide. And yes, it could have gone in a splosh if the commission had known about it in time to put it in the last splosh. But we didn't, and now we can't delay. Something that has to come out of this general fund, although it is a one-time purchase for the major equipment, software, and training for that. The accounting software, as a citizen of this county, I had no idea that our accounting software didn't meet the state guidelines for charts and accounts, and that we were two years behind on full building audit because we didn't have a CFO. So those are things that we have to be physically responsible and do for the citizens to keep this county solvent. None of us who are just going about our regular business knew that the camera system at the prison is an analog system, and that half of the cameras, I think it's about that, don't work. And therefore, we're not keeping our prisoners safe, nor our employees safe. I think when we look at these other things, the debt payment on the community center, because of the way those bonds are structured, they couldn't be in a splosh. So we were trying to figure out a way to get those in a splosh, but up until now, we couldn't. And that's six hundred, over six hundred thousand dollars that comes right off the top every year for the next thirteen years. So there are things that I think anybody that has the county's best interest at heart, who would sit in the seats that we're sitting in, would say those are things that we have to do. They've been put off long enough, they've been put off too long. And during the recession, that's what governments do. They put, they kick the can down the road until it hits them in the face, and they can't put it off any longer. And so, of course, some of those things happened during the recession. And yet, during the recession, the tax digest was flat, if not decreased, every year. And we're adding new subdivisions which require more support. So I developed a budget for the school district of this county for nine years, and for three and a half years in Skogee County, and I never recommended a budget with a millage increase. But I'm telling you tonight, and I don't have the stomach for it. And I'm telling you tonight that we have to increase the millage in order to keep the county solvent and to provide the services. Now, I don't think that two and a half percent is what we have to do. And hearing the people tonight, many of them said, we understand that there has to be a tax increase, but two and a half percent is a big jump in a year's time. But I do think we have to look down the road and make sure that we remain physically solvent and that we do the things that we need to do. So having said all of that, I'd like to make the motion that we set the millage increase at two mills rather than two and a half.
All right, thank you. Ms. Andrews, do I have a second to that motion? Is there a second to that motion? All right, the motion dies without a second. Is there another motion?
I'll be with that boy. I want to read you the millage rates in the surrounding counties. Truett County, ten point eight seven. Meriwether County, thirteen point six six nine. Muskogee County, I can't figure that out, but it's more than us. Lee County, which is considered the comparable county by the county commissioners, fourteen twenty-one. Monroe County, which is another comparable county, eleven point eight one. Talbot County is sixteen. That's what Harris County pays compared to what everybody else does. That, I don't like tax increases. I don't, I vehemently oppose, but you're going to have to increase the taxes. You're going to, eventually going to get, if right now, it's going to be, it needs to be two and a half percent to equal out mill, I'm sorry. That, if the figures don't work otherwise, that if you do one point seven, you're just guaranteeing that you're going to do one in the next year, because you've got to make up that difference. Or you probably have to do one point three for several years additional. So you're actually going to end up, instead of it being eight point six five at nine next year. And that's just math, very simple math. That, so I, I, I work very hard at finding a figure that would work, finding things way... There are various ways I propose that we change splosh, that we can keep it at two point five, because the way we'd handle splosh before, we wouldn't stay at two point five. And so therefore, I'd like to make the recommendation that the tech, the millage rate be increased to two point five, two point five percent. Mills.
So that would set the, the annual, what's the total millage rate?
That would be...
Eight point six four.
Eight point six four.
Okay. So your motion...
County M and O.
Yeah, set the millage rate at eight point six oh.
Six four.
Eight point six four.
Six four, whatever.
All right, we've got a motion for two point five mill increase, do I have a second to that motion?
Some of us are the same, I won't repeat, but I'll, I'll second it. Can't see anything but more and more losses and getting ourselves in worse financial trouble, which means more taxes in the future, and it's not wrong, I think. I think this will get us there. I know it will be probably three, over three and a half mills, and we're really good at all, on the taxes to get what we need. So we're not going up really as much as we need, but I'll second the two point five.
The reason I would say two instead of two point five is that the nine one one is a one-time expense. And some of these other things are one-time expenses. And I believe that the economy is decreasing, I believe that the digest is going to... Now, I don't have a crystal ball up here to tell me that.
Nice, you do.
But I wish I did. But I believe that we are in an uptick in the economy, I believe that we will have more growth in the county. I'm trusting that we will continue to get businesses in our business heart. And so, you know, I would prefer no increase at all, but I, I do believe that the tax rate is very significant. So that's why I was going for the two and not the two point five. I think that you set the millage rate to fund your budget, whether, of course, using your reserve, you always have to, most always have to use some of your reserve. But I think the two would, would work, and so I just put that back on the table. I mean, not put that back on the table, but explain that the reasoning is because the nine one one system is that one-time, large expense. And if we can get the payment for the community center in the splosh, and I know that would be another couple of years down the road, that we can manage for that. But you're right, we, we've got to increase, and so that's just my comment on the motion.
I've just been on the board a lot less than y'all have, except you citizens, which I know all of a sudden are great experience. But from the conversations we've had, we were expecting a large development to be online, hopefully by now, and therefore kept taxes really low, thinking we'll use the reserves, we'll use the reserves, we'll have this coming in the future. And it doesn't look like it's coming anytime in the future now that we can count on. So we've come, dug ourselves down, and we don't have that to look forward to, or anything that we know to be responsible of doing is something we have to know and not, not hope for. Because we can always back down if what we hoped for comes true in the county.
Randy, what was the number, the total number that we were taking from the funds going into, into those reserves?
Regarding the journal fund, which is the biggest fund the county has, which funds all its typical departments, we're taking, we're taking six hundred and twenty thousand from the jail fund. And that would pretty well deplete that entire fund, not all of it. Will complete that fund, six hundred and twenty thousand. We're taking three hundred thousand dollars from the waterworks fund. We're taking one point five million from the solid waste fund. And we're taking about one point six seven million from the journal fund reserves.
So about four million dollars is not being paid by property taxes, is being paid from reserves. Those have been depleted and depleted post-implication throughout the years, and we're getting very, very low, and...
All of these are, they're on a downward, downward trend.
And those funds are there for definite, specific needs, and we've been operating them to prop the budget, which is not their purpose.
And also for the more deliberations, on September 5th, when Tusa gets here on next meeting meeting to talk about the touch system, they're more than likely tell you they need one point five million dollars of improvements. That's not budgeted, okay, that's right? And in the library, if donations don't come as anticipated, then, then the library construction would need additional funding, that's not budgeted, if, if donations don't come in as anticipated. So there are a lot of uncertainties out there that we need to be ready for.
Yeah, I think the, I appreciate that, because I, I thought it was a three million dollar right to be, that we are choosing not to pass on by taking it from these fund balances. I think it's been said, none of us really want to raise it at all, but we've been for a lot of years without that. We pulled, there's money out of a hat somewhere, two or three of those last years. It's just not there to pull out, just not putting us dangerously low in any kind of funds, reserve funds. I certainly, I'm moved by and understand those who are on fixed incomes. All of us are also, or just some of we anyway. But, you know, I, I would... My feeling is that nobody's going to be happy with an increase. I would rather make the increase such that, don't, don't think that we will have to do one for another two or three years. I think, think the two and a half bills at least give us fight. Anyone else wish to make a comment? All right, so we have a motion and a second.
And the motion is to set the county millage rate at eight point six four for the calendar year two thousand seventeen.
Fiscal year seventeen.
I mean fiscal, fiscal year seventeen, not calendar.
Yeah. This won't, any increase wing will not go until the January of this next year.
No.
No.
Should we set the rate for this year?
For this year, but it'll be, it'll be roughly this time next year when, when we would review.
Yeah, so if you're setting the millage rate for two thousand seventeen at eight point six four, that's the motion. The millage rate for the school has already been set by, by the school board and the, which is there, they'll give you an obligation of the law. And then West Point has set its own millage rate also, so this will complete the process.
But do we need to also have the motion for the West Point?
No.
All right. All right, was there any other comments here? Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
Does, does the motion need to be amended to include the West Point?
Yes, I think it does, yeah.
I'd like to amend it that the rest of the county should be at five point one eight four and authorize the tax commissioner to collect the school board's millage of eight point five six.
So I set the counties at eight point six four.
All right, so we, we do have that motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, please see if I raise your hands. Opposed? Three to two, the millage will be eight point six four for the county, which is up to two point five. Again, thanks to everyone who made comments, we appreciate those. I hope that we're able to do what we think we will by not having anything more next year. All right, the next item, the addition of the, the recreation board. In January of this year, Troy Lundquist, no presidential, no athletic association, and he will enable to continue on the rec board due to his new job. At the end of March, the rec board temporarily appointed Heather Hyack to the board as their rep for a ninety day term for their bylaw. Down June the twenty eighth, the rec board temporarily appointed Sherean Johnson to the board as their rep. And they are now formally requesting that Mr. Johnson be appointed as a representative to complete Mr. Lundquist's term, which expires December thirty one, two thousand eighteen. Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion and we appoint Mr. Johnson to it.
All right, we have a second. Motion and a second discussion. All in favor, please see if I raise your hands. Motion to... Any other new business? Mr. Dowling, project updates.
Mr. Chairman, board commissioners, a quick review of what's going on in the county right now of the fifty projects we have going on currently. Number one, interview and hire a full-time IT manager. Eight applications received, three interviews were held August eighteenth. A offer was extended today and was accepted by one of the three, and he will begin on September the first. So that will be taken care of. And everybody, all the staff members are looking forward to having a full-time IT manager helping them with their IT needs. Number five, the county-wide funding, counting the song core package, that is on bid, the bid opening is September first. Number seven, a prison's camera system replacement. There was a pre-proposal meeting yesterday, and nine companies were present. That's, that's very healthy attendance, from nine different companies who want to bid on the county's camera system to replace the prison's outdated catalog system with a more modern digital system. And that is on bid, and the bid opening will be on Sept... And that is on bid and the bid opening will be on Septem, no, August the 24th. And that should be before the board for consideration on September the 5th. Number eight, again, the public safety radio system. Again, that's an ongoing project, it began in January and it's unfolding right now. As long as, also number nine, the 911 telephone system portion was approved and all the parts are being sent in and that is being installed currently. The CAD system portion of the 911 system, the bid opening has been pushed back to 8/18 at the request of several vendors. So that will be opened up on August the 18th. And hopefully that can be discussed and considered by the board on September 5th also. Number 15, the 2016 L-ME project of 6.9 miles of Lick Skeller Road. Again, a little bidder was Robinson Paving at $875,000 and change in completion during September and October. Number 16, 2017 L-ME. Again, Robinson Paving was a little bitter and that Hunter Road, Terry Lane Cargill Road and Voorhees Road should be completed in, in September, October. And that is 670,000 additional dollars. So the road resurfacing going on. Along with number 17, Madison Way and Mount Ery. Again, Robinson Paving was a little bitter and that should be resurfaced in September, October also. Number 19 is a new item. The county did submit a grant to the Georgia Department of Transportation and did receive $65,000 grant recently for additional L-ME to fund guardrails and road striping. And so that would be matched with 10% from splot 2009. And these products were being finalized and then they will be submitted to DOT for final approval. And then we'll have to bid that out and DOT wants us to be complete by the end of the year. So that, that is a fast-growing project for additional L-ME above beyond the county's regular allocation for guardrails and road striping. Number 20, Hardage Road, that's paving a road from dirt. That is ongoing right now. Again, Robinson Paving was a little bitter and, and Water Works Department is currently installing water lines or they, they will be very, very soon. And that completion is probably late 2017 to pave Hardage Road about .6 miles. And it's interesting to note, the .6 miles is going to cost about $716,000. So if you do a poor mile, it's, it's an excess of $1 million a mile to pave a dirt road to DOT standards. So road paving does not come cheap. Just hitting the highlights, number 34, the airport hasn't received its avgas truck yet, but it has been purchased and delivery will be mid, late August. Number 42, the library construction is going quite well on, on budget and it's going very well. And again, it's 1.5 million from splot 2009, half a million from splot 2014, two million from the state of Georgia and 1.26 from donations. So there's no private tax money in the construction aspect of the new library, which is adjacent to the community center. Number 43, that is completed. It's a 2012 city B G project. After five years, we finally finished. And finished being all the paperwork is done. So that's good to have number 43 out of here. 44, the board had a retreat last February, last February, last Friday. It was, it went very well. Number 48, a five-year CIP. Staff prepared a five-year capital improvement program to have a look seat down the five-year path to see what major capital projects the county is working on and, and what is needed for proper planning. And again, that was submitted to the board on July 14th and was discussed on the Friday's retreat. Number 49 is interesting, the splot continuation. The current splot was for five years, it ends in March 2019. So the board wants to go to an election next May, May 22nd, 2018 to be exact, to ask the voters to continue the splot for another additional six years to do various capital improvements. And again, that was discussed at the retreat also. And the county also has updated all of its fee schedules. And that, I'm hoping to have a workshop with the board at the next meeting, September 5th. So all the departments can look at the fee schedules and the board can ask questions and eventually adopt fee schedules for every department that has fees. That is the highlights. And again, this program of work is on our website, it's updated every week. So again, the important work is on the county's website and it can be reviewed.
Since Harry is indisposed at the moment, I will take over. Would you please review the things, Mr. Taylor?
Yes, sir, I have one, one item, there is a resolution before you to establish a temporary moratorium on planned urban developments in the county. And the, your ordinance, development ordinance has, has provided for a, for planned unit development, which are, which can be a planned residential development, a planned commercial development and planned manufacturing development. And the, there's been some, some ongoing questions about the, the, what should, whether or not these are actually, our current ordinance actually meets what we need to do to accommodate the growth that's coming and, and the new, these, these new developments and these new projects coming in. And I understand that the planning commission has asked that there be a moratorium established on, on the application or approval of any of these, these, these planned putt units until such time as they can come up with, with some more and you can enact a, some amendments to the ordinance. There's a resolution before you and what you're not doing, you're not repealing the ordinance. All you're doing is establishing a moratorium and that is a timeout. Georgia law allows you to do that as, as long as it's not on a permanent basis and this is a temporary for 90 days, at the end of 90 days, and you could, if you wanted to, could also extend it for, for another, another period of time. I would request that, that you recommend that you adopt the resolution and modify the first two sentences where it ends, it says, whereas Harris County has been one of the fastest-growing counties in the state of Georgia. And then the second one, revise it to say, whereas residential and planned developments have increased in Harris County. And then the rest of the resolution states that. But with those two changes, I'd recommend that you adopt this moratorium on, for planned urban, planned unit developments for a period of 90 days. During those period of time, you will start making some review of these and some changes that feel, that feel necessary.
What was that change in the second, whereas?
It just said, whereas residential and planned developments have increased in Harris County. For a long time, we didn't have these and then now we're getting here, there and the other.
All right. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move with this resolution and I'll be passed with the change as suggested by Mr. Taylor.
Motion and a second discussion. All in favor, please, if you have raised your hand.
Mr. Chairman, I don't hear anything further. I understand there's a need, a need to go into executive session briefly for purchase, litigation, acquisition and lease of real, real property and for personnel.
All right, I'll make that motion in a second. All in favor? All right. All right, we will return to executive session then.